Sure.
Okay.
We'd like to call to the order of our regular planning commission meeting. It's July the 14th and it's 6:02 PM. Um, can, I guess, let's, we'll put our right hand over our heart, um, do a pledge of allegiance. All right, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America. And to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I get a roll call of our members?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Abrego, Valerie is not here this evening in the, at City Hall, so I'm going to be doing the roll calls this evening. So, Commissioner Batista?
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez? Commission, Commissioner Weisenberger?
Here.
Commission Vice Chair Esparza?
Here.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Here.
And one more time, Commissioner Gutierrez? Okay. Um. We may want to move to excuse Commissioner Gutierrez?
Okay.
Go ahead, I'll make a motion to approve it. I'll make a motion to approve Gutierrez.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, this is Weisenberger, I second the motion.
Okay, I'll do roll call, Commissioner Batista?
Here.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Here.
Commission Vice Chair Esparza?
Here.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Here. All right, the next item is the approval of the minutes for June the 9th, 2020. Can I get a motion, uh, approval for the planning commission minutes for June the 9th?
Uh, this is Ernie Esparza, I make a motion to approve the minutes of June 9th, 2020?
And second by? Can I get a second?
Second by, uh, Weisenberger?
Roll call, please.
Okay, roll call, Commissioner Batista?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Esparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes. Next item is public comment, any public comments?
Uh, no, not general public comments.
Hey, John Carver?
Yes.
This is John Kavanaugh.
Oh, John, I-
Did I just hear, hi, did I just hear Jaime, Jaime Abrego come in?
No, we were waiting for Gutierrez, Commissioner Gutierrez?
Oh, okay, so Commissioner Gutierrez is absent?
It appears that way, and the commissioner has, uh, excused him.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, next item, new, our new business. Um. So would that be? Uh, zone change, now I guess, item number two, zone change number 235?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I'll be handling this item, and, um, this is a request, um, if you, uh, if you have your slides in front of you, we're, we're on the second slide background. So this item is a request for a zone change from M1 to PDPS, uh, single-family residential, to allow for the construction of 10 single-family homes. The project site is located at 6,500 to 6,510 Alondra Boulevard, and the site contains 30,744 square feet. This project also includes a tentative tract map, a parcel parkway vacation, and a development review application, which will be heard later this evening. And then moving on to the next slide, um, this is an aerial of the subject property, it's outlined in red. The frontage road, um, is located just to the north of it, and then to the north of the, of the frontage road is Alondra Boulevard. Then the next slide shows two pictures of the subject site. Uh, one of the parcels is vacant, the other one has residential uses on it. And then we move to the, uh, next slide, which is project description. The, uh, zone change will allow for the development of 10 detached, single-family homes on individual lots. Each of the homes will have four bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms, and will range in size from 1,711 square feet to 1,800 square feet. Each home will contain a two-car garage and two driveway parking places. And then the next slide, which is also project description, the PDPS zoning requires that the garages be used to park two vehicles. Overflow parking and guest parking will be, will be provided on the frontage road, which will be designated as resident permit parking only. Access to the development will be off of the frontage road, and the development will be accessed by two private driveways. The next slide is also project description, the lots will range in size from 2,453 square feet to 3,611 square feet. These lot sizes are similar to other projects in the city, including the Kaufman and Broad Development, where lots average 3,000 square feet, and the Olson Project on Orange Avenue, where lots range in size from 2,500 square feet to 3,800 square feet. The next slide shows the existing zoning, which is light manufacturing. Next slide shows the proposed zoning, which is PDPS, Plan Development with Performance Standards, Single Family Residential. Next slide shows the land use, and there is a mix of residential and light manufacturing. Next slide shows the general plan, and the general plan designation is multiple-family residential. And just a little background on the general plan, this lays out what the zoning in the city should be over a 10- to 15-year period. In the case of this project, before the commission this evening, the residential zoning will implement the general plan. And here's just a quick look at, um, sample elevations, I'll go over this in detail during the development review board meeting. The next slide is the site plan, and again, I'll go over this in more detail during the development review board meeting. Next slide is discussion. The proposed, uh, proposed project will be consistent with other residential that is in the area of the proposed project. The project will provide low-density residential, which is in demand, and the project will help to encourage homeownership. On the next slide, we have three pictures of the surrounding area, and you can see it's a mix of multiple-family residential and single-family residential. And looking at the next slide, it's, this is the environmental analysis. An environmental assessment was conducted by an outside consultant. The assessment found that the project is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act. And with that, we are recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any, any questions from our Commissioners?
Hmm, no, I don't have any, this is Ernie.
I don't either, this is Gordon.
This is Commissioner Bautista, no questions, no questions at this point.
Okay. Um, can I get a motion to approve, um, resolution number PC 20010?
Uh, Commissioner Chair, um, Abrego, this is a public hearing?
Oh, that's right, correct. This is a public hearing, and, um, if we have anyone, those are, if anyone, anyone in the public is in favor or opposed?
We have, uh, no comments for, uh, in favor or opposed.
Okay. So can I, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Or this ain't, zone change number 235?
Yeah, I have a, this is Ernie Esparza, uh, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Uh, Weisenberger, second.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Batista?
Here, yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Esparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes. Okay, the next is, um, the motion to adopt the planning commission resolution number PC 20010. Can I get a motion to approve?
Uh, I make a motion to approve, uh, uh, PC 20010.
Do I have a second?
This is Commissioner Bautista, I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Esparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yeah. Next item. The agenda is tentative tract map number 80390. A request by the Gold Key Development to subdivide two properties to create 10 single-family residential lots, that's a 6,500, 6,510 Alondra Boulevard, in the M1 Light Manufacturing Zone.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I'll be handling this also. Uh, this is the second item related to the 10-unit housing development. And looking at the request slide, um, so this item again is a request to create, I'm sorry, this item is a request to create 10 single-family parcels. The site contains 30,744 square feet. Um, as I discussed in the last presentation, the parcels will range in size from 2,453 square feet to just a little bit more than 3,600 square feet. Each of the homes will contain two stories, and will range in size from 1,700 square feet to 1,800 square feet. And as previously presented in the last presentation, each home will also have a two-car garage and two driveway parking places. If you look at the next side, slide, um, we have, uh, a parcel map. And then the next slide is, is titled tract map, and the tract map will allow each parcel to be sold individually, and the site is suitable in size and dimension for the proposed project. And we're recommending that you approve tentative tract map 80390, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from our-
Yeah, this is Commissioner Bautista, this, this project is set to, uh, to start, but what are the tentative dates? Or, uh, completion dates?
Oh, okay, so this is going to be, um, Gold Key Development will be doing this project. Um, this developer did the project at, uh, Texaco and Somerset, across the street from the post office, and then previous to that, he did the 30 units south of Home Depot. So, he generally starts very quickly after he has the approval, and, um, I wouldn't think more than six months, uh, for construction time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from our Commissioners?
Well, the only, I have is, uh, Gold Key Development has done a very good few years, uh, with the city of Paramount. So like, uh, John Carver just said, if he starts in, within six months, his completion is pretty, pretty quick, really, even with the 10 homes that he has, so. That's my only comment, really.
Okay. Okay. This is a public hearing, so, um, like to hear from those in favor or those opposed?
We, uh, we have no comments for in favor or opposed.
Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Or-
This is Weisenberger, so moved.
This is Commissioner Bautista, I second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Esparza?
Yes.
Chair Abrego?
Yeah. The next, uh, is adopting planning commission resolution number PC 20022. Can I get a motion? To approve?
Uh, yeah, this is Ernie Esparza, I make a motion, eh, in order to, by title only, to waive further reading and adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 20022, approving a request by Gold Key Development to subdivide two properties to create 10 single-family residential lots at 6,500 dash 6,510 Alondra Boulevard, in the M1 Light Manufacturing Zone.
Thank you, Ernie, can I get a second?
Uh, I second it, this is Weisenberger.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Commissioner Batista?
Uh, yes?
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Esparza?
Yes.
Chair Abrego?
Yes.
And, and, did we by chance have Commissioner Gutierrez join us?
I do, sorry, you guys, a little bit, got in the middle of a, had connection issues.
Okay, okay, great, so you're here, okay.
Good, good. And that's a yes vote for me.
Okay, great.
All right, good, so our next item is item number four, resolution number PC 20026, planning the vacation of a, planning the vacation of a portion of the south side of the Alondra Boulevard, frontage road, west of Huntbacker Avenue, to be conformity with the general plan.
Uh, yes, uh, Ms., uh, Commissioner Chair and Commissioners, so, uh, this item is the third part of the 10-unit housing development, and it's a vacation of a parkway, and the site is located on the south side of Alondra Boulevard, and this is on the frontage road. And, uh, the portion to be vacated measures approximately 15 feet by 187 feet. And, uh, I'm sorry, uh, so. So, uh, the next slide is, uh, shows the, um, division of the land and the street vacation, and, um, as you can see, the proposed, I'm sorry, the proposed parkway vacation is located on the south side of the frontage road, and then Alondra Boulevard, again, is located on the north side of that frontage road. And, um, the vacation is similar to a vacation that was done just to the east, uh, about 20 years ago, it was a vacation of the parkway that was not part of the frontage road. And, um, this proposed vacation will continue that previous vacation, and it will not disturb, um, any of the street on the frontage road, it's just a vacation of the parkway. Uh, so the planning commission has to find that the vacation conforms with the general plan's circulation element, and our city attorney has looked at that, and has determined that it will not be in conflict with the circulation element, and that the vacation will not affect traffic flow or circulation. And it's recommended that you adopt resolution PC 20026, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from our Commissioners? Okay. Yeah, I guess, this is a public hearing, so, any of those in favor or any, anyone opposed?
Uh, uh, Chair Abrego, uh, I apologize, the motion sheet, this is actually not a public hearing, so you would just need somebody to make a motion on the resolution.
Okay, can I get a motion for, um, to adopt the planning commission resolution number PC 20026, planning the vacation of a portion of the side of the Alondra Boulevard, frontage road, parkway, west of Huntbacker Avenue, to be in conformity with the general plan?
Uh, this is, uh, Weisenberger, I so moved.
Do I get a second?
I'll second it, this is Ernie Esparza.
Thank you, Ernie, roll call, please, John?
Commissioner Batista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Esparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes. Next, um, next item on the agenda is, um, item number five, resolution number PC 20020, development agreement number, uh, 20-dash-1. A request by Don Del Rose, Del Rose, displays of a development agreement with the city of Paramount for the construction, installation, and operation of a freeway-oriented digital billboard on a vacant land on Rosecrans Avenue between the Los Angeles River and the 710 freeway.
Yes, Commissioner Chair Abrego and Commissioners, um, you get a break from me for a little while. John King will handle this item, and this is, again, for an electronic billboard adjacent to the 710 freeway, just north of Rosecrans. John?
Um, thank you, thank you, um, let me kind of back up a bit, Commissioner Chair Abrego and John Carver and Commissioners. So this is, um, this is a different kind of an application, and it, actually, it is, um, I, almost exciting, it's a, so it's a digital billboard or an electronic billboard, and it would face the 17, 710 freeway, and just, uh, kind of a sneak peek of what it's going to look like, and we'll get into more detail during the development review board portion of the, uh, of the evening, and a little more in this, um, application. So, pretty nice, as far as billboards go. And the request, the crest, the request is a development agreement with the city of Paramount for the construction, installation, and operation of a freeway-oriented billboard, and it would be on vacant land that's north of Rosecrans Avenue, and it's basically between the, um, Los Angeles River and the 710 freeway, and there's, uh, the particular assessor parcel numbers there. It's a really, um, kind of a regularly shaped, um, piece of land that, uh, kind of blink it if, and you'll miss it, and we'll kind of, I'll show you a little more about that, and it's in the M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone, been vacant for many years, um, since the construction of the 710 freeway, so, um, in the 50s. And you, um, the next slide you could see is an aerial photo showing, uh, the location. The red border is the border between the city of Linwood and the city of Paramount. And you can see this, um, it's just bare soil and some, uh, shrubs and, um, weeds, really, um, between, sandwiched between the river and the freeway, and it's in that, that purple area. There's a number of, of parcels, and there's kind of some strange shapes, and that's because years ago, this was laid out for, um, for housing before the, um, you know, the advent of the, of the freeways, and, uh, so there's some vacated, um, streets in there, and when that yellow circle is the particular parcel for the, um, the billboards proposed to go. And some background, in December of last year, uh, the planning commission recommended to the city council, that the city council approve a change to the, um, zoning ordinance. Um, it's called a zoning ordinance text amendment, or ZODA, to allow digital billboards facing the 710 freeway in this general area between Rosecrans and the 105 freeway. So the, uh, city council, uh, took your recommendation, and they went with it, and they adopted an ordinance, um, in, um, February, and became effective in March. Um, the ordinance does require, um, a development agreement, and the, um, and that's, we'll, we'll look at the location and then get into the agreement itself. So the next slide, and the next couple of slides are the, um, are the site plans. So first, kind of a broader view, um, you could see Rosecrans at the bottom, running east and west, and then the, uh, 710 freeway, more or less, north and south, or angled to the, to the east, um, and then the river oriented more or less the same way. And then you'll see the, um, kind of to upper left, what looks like a little V, it's, so it's a kind of a V-shaped, if you're looking overhead, the, um, two, two sign faces, and they come together at a point like, like a V, if you're looking, um, overhead. And there's a little, um, basically a dirt road, uh, access roadway that leads to it off of Rosecrans, and it's very hard to miss. So if you're traveling, um, east, or I'm sorry, west on Rosecrans, as if you're going, um, to Compton or, or farther west, um, and if you're going to, uh, onto, gonna, if you're driving onto the 710 freeway, onto the, um, on-ramp there, just before you get onto the freeway on-ramp, there's a, um, there's a small dirt road there. The next, uh, view is a close-up of, of the location, so you can see, really, get a closer look at the, at that V of the, uh, of the billboard, the overhead view. Now you see it labeled McMillan Street and Riverside Drive, those are the old, old roads through there. The old tract. So, um, then the next slide are some actual photos taken a few days ago, and you can see at, at the top left is looking north at the, toward the seven, uh, sort of the Century Freeway, the 105, and if you look at, on that same photo, at the very bottom, it's kind of easy to miss, but there's a little tiny post sticking out on the bottom next to, um, a little piece of brick or block, that's, what, that represents the, where the post of the billboard would go, the center of the, of the actual post, the support. Um, the bottom right is, um, a view off of Rosecrans Avenue, and that's the little gate that, um, blocks entry to the, um, to these, these properties um, in there, and, um, the applicant will be, uh, by the way, the applicant will be leasing the, um, one of the properties in there. So the next slide, here's the, another view of that, the billboard. And, um, open to interpretation, but I, personally, I think it's, it's a really, one of the better-looking billboards out there. So it has the city logo, it's double-sided, um, the city logo is, uh, would be illuminated with, um, LED, 45-foot height total for the entire structure. Um, the faces are, are also called the message display center, is 14 feet in height and 48 feet in length, and you also see the, the word "City of Paramount" on there. What really makes it stand out is the, um, the applicant is going with an, an artist who has, um, background working with different elements of the Los Angeles River revitalization, and, um, to add some laser cut metalwork on, on the, um, on the post. So you could see some nods to the river and the wildlife, um, so, it's pretty exciting. There's another, um, piece of art on the other side. Now getting into the development agreements, the next few slides are some of the details, some of the important points. Lighting, lighting is really, uh, is essential, so, you know, obviously, it has to light up at night, and, and it takes a lot of power to light up during the day, but you do, do not want to distract, overly distract drivers, and you don't want to be a nuisance to the neighbors, particularly the residential neighbors. Just south of Rosecrans is a mobile home park, the Rio Puente, uh, Mobile Home Park. Across the freeway to the west is a neighborhood in, in Linwood, single-family homes. So, taking pains not to, um, disturb them, and we'll get more into that into the, in the development review board portion of this evening. But the agreement itself, some of the language, automatic dimming system shall be installed to reduce the intensity of the light emitting from the message display center during operations between sunset and sunrise. Visible light levels are measured, measured by lumens. Daytime sunrise to sunset maximum lighting levels will not exceed 7,500 lumens per square meter. Nighttime sunset to sunrise lighting levels will not exceed 500 lumens per square meter. A lot of, a lot of this is, um, based on some, uh, on Caltrans regulations, and it really is to, uh, to, uh, protect the, the area, and, um, they do, the applicant did an excellent job of, of meeting those goals. Uh, maintenance, the applicant will maintain the billboard and site in good condition. Weeds will need to be removed and prevented. Graffiti and other forms of vandalism will need to be removed within 24 hours. So, um, the, this area will be secure, there'll actually be, um, just an aside, that there will be a, um, a fence built around the perimeter of the lease area, and, um, but it is unfortunate, sometimes, you know, if somebody wants to vandalize or graffiti, if any type of object, they find a way, so, there is that, um, that language um, to, to remediate that. Promotion of city events, so this really is a, again, a, a win-win, um, this helps out the city, the applicant, and the community, and builds goodwill and, um, helps us out. So the agreement requires a guaranteed minimum rate of 5% and up to 10% on a space-available basis of each minute for civic public service messages. So, kind of, we can almost use our imagination here, the different types of civic messages, um, you know- You know, we just went through a loud fireworks season of illegal fireworks, so there could be messaging about anti, or promoting, or informing the public about fines and that kind of thing. Or now we have the census, maybe promoting the US Census and how important that is. And events like the tree lighting ceremony, you know, breakfast with Santa and summer concert series. Revenue, in this era, I'll read the language. The agreement provides for an annual payment from the applicant to the city, beginning at $105,000 with adjustments in future years based on the consumer price index. And this is really important. In this era of, you know, the city typically gets a lot of, huge bulk of revenue from retail sales. But, you know, with the Amazon days, we're not, we're seeing less storefront retail and it's going to, you know, Amazon in Seattle, you could say. So this is one way to, to help out the city in that department. Limitations. To avoid controversial messaging, content of a political, religious, or sexual nature will not be permitted. Messages will also not contain advertising for distilled spirits, tobacco products, gambling or gambling services. However, gambling establishments may advertise non-gaming services such as music concerts or live comedy. And this is pretty standard for, for cities. We did a lot of research on this and checked out and did, you know, surveys of what other folks are doing. So if you kind of read through this, what would be permitted, beer and wine. Also, you know, like a San Antonio winery in Los Angeles, you know, they advertise a lot on local billboards. That would be, that would be okay. Breweries, but, but for hard liquor, basically, for distilled spirits, that would not work. Tobacco products, cannabis. And in terms of gambling, so direct references to gambling would not be permitted. But if it's, if a casino, you know, in the desert area or nearby is promoting, you know, a live concert or comedy, that works, that would work. Blodget Bellosus, an environmental planning firm, conducted an extensive environmental analysis based on the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. So we, you know, we deal a lot with SEQA. And in this case, we made sure that the study was very thorough. And you could, you could see the study in your attachments. And all this, if any of the public is listening, this information is on the web, on the city website. The, we do, we did post this on the, there's under the planning department, planning division, there's a section for environmental documents. The initial study determined the project will not have a significant, immitigable negative impact on the environment. So that's good news. And then our mitigated negative declaration is recommended. And we'll go through the document, some of the highlights and what that, that particular mitigation is. So we'll go through each of these areas of, issue areas, I guess. Starting with aesthetics. Aesthetics, the 45-foot height would not block views from surrounding buildings. The light intensity from billboard images would be, would be modulated. So they don't interfere with driver vision during the night and avoid light pollution in the evening. That's, you know, a huge goal of the city. And light will not, will not impact residential properties, thankfully. Air quality. It's actually, it's pretty amazing how quickly this gets installed. The billboard will be constructed off-site. So the, you know, there's no real manufacturing or too much construction. It just kind of gets popped in within a few weeks, more or less. The emissions, so the air emissions related to the installation and operation are minimal, so no mitigation is required. Moving on to cultural resources. This, this is a kind of a key area. And it'll tie in with a later area of tribal resources. This, a project site is situated in an area of high archaeological significance. Mitigation measures are provided to ensure the preservation of any discovered tribal artifacts. And the reason behind this is, you think about it, so this is right by the Los Angeles River. And going back to, you know, the native people, the indigenous people, they typically would live near a water source. So they're, although, you know, this, where the, the boring excavation would be for the, for the post, the support for this project would probably be unlikely to uncover anything, we do have to have this just in case, you know. And the second part is if human remains are uncovered by construction crews, all excavation and grading activities shall be halted and the county sheriff's department would be contacted and they would then contact the county coroner and go, they have a whole procedure there. So that's really important. Energy. Took a look and the, so on average, average digital billboard produces 61,032 kilowatt-hours. And in compared, to compare that to a small retail specialty store, 1,200 square feet, so, you know, probably smaller or about the size of a typical house, single-family home, that, that kind of type of store consumes about 69,715 kilowatt-hours. So it's less than, than a, you know, a little shop. This billboard would be even less. The billboard would be projected to draw 50 amps, translating to annual usage of 52,560 kilowatt-hours. And it could actually be lower depending on a few factors. And billboard would also use electrical energy and be constructed in relation to current electrical codes, including Title 24 of the California Building Code. Also, there's a, the city of Paramount, as you probably know, is part of the Green Power Alliance. Hope I got that, the name right. CPA. So, so a lot of our energy is based on renewables, more so than most cities, so we're proud to say. Land use and planning. nearest residential are the single-family homes 600 feet west in Linwood. And the project will not lead to any division of any, of an existing established neighborhood. So there will be no impacts. And the site itself is undeveloped, covered in dirt, grass, debris. Project will not cause a significant impact due to conflicting any land use plan. No impacts will occur. And that, back, I hinted at this, the tribal cultural resources, this is the other important, or actually the important area. And there is a mitigation on the next slide. So the entire city is located within the cultural area that was formerly occupied by the Gabriel Leno, the Kish people, Kish Nation. Although the surrounding area has been subject to disturbance to accommodate the existing roadways and development, the project site is situated in an area of high archaeological significance, as we mentioned. And so mitigation is required. And here's the actual mitigation. And the next slide. The project applicant will be required to obtain the services of a qualified Native American monitor or monitors during construction-related ground disturbance activities. Ground disturbance is defined by the tribal representatives from the Gabriel Leno Band of Mission Indians, the Kish Nation, as activities include, but are not limited to pavement removal, potholing, or augering, boring, grading, excavation, trenching within the site. The monitors must be approved by the tribal representatives and will be present on-site during construction phases that involve any ground disturbing activities. In summary, so just to wrap it all up, this billboard sign will be directed to a freeway that's located on the western fringe of Paramount. The agreement will ensure lighting glare will not be allowed to be a nuisance to the surrounding neighborhoods. And percentage of advertising time, or airtime is another term for that. Airtime dedicated to the promotion of community events will benefit the city, as well revenue sharing agreement with the applicant. So there's two actions. We recommend that you adopt a mitigated negative declaration and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And then secondly, adopt resolution number PC 20020 recommending that the city council approve development agreement number 21. And that concludes this. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is actually listening in. If you have any questions that I can't answer, we'll get them on the phone.
Thank you, John. Any questions from our commissioners, our staff, or others?
I do have a question for John. I think I've seen it in here, but this is privately owned land, right? This is not city-owned property?
That, that is correct.
Who's asking the question?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Gutierrez, yes, it is privately owned land. There's a property owner who is, would be leasing the land to the applicant, a long-term lease.
Okay, sounds good, thanks, John.
You're welcome.
All right, if we don't have any other questions?
Yeah, Commissioner Bautista, I do have a question.
Okay.
Hi, John, I see the, the display has, you know, beautiful display regarding sharing summer concert series and other civic activities. Is there also a plan to, to give special rates to our local businesses in our city?
Let's see, we'll go to the actual agreement. And actually, you know, the city attorney was instrumental in negotiating the agreement. City Attorney Kavanaugh, is that something you could speak to?
Yeah, but I don't think that's, that's in the agreement, John, as far as discounts to. I think, I think what we put in there was give a guaranteed amount of time on the billboard. So it's a question more if the applicant wants to do that.
Okay. I would imagine the city's goal would be more for community-oriented advertising, so more so nonprofit and/or just directly city-related.
Okay. Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. So if I hear anyone that, or are there any?
Esparza? I have a question. This is Ernie Esparza. Is there any way that we could put some type of cameras or something on that billboard? Because you know, the way, I mean, I think we could because of the high-tech that we have now. Is there any way we could so that, you know, they wouldn't start graffitiing it or whatever we can?
That's, that's an excellent suggestion. I understand, I believe the applicant intended to do so. When we get to the development review application, that would probably be the better opportunity to include that as a, as a condition. I, actually, you know what, we'll, we're going to skip to that section.
Commission Vice Chair, I think it's part, it's already a requirement.
Sounds right.
We'll double check.
Oh, you know what? It is in there. It is a condition of the development review application. Thank you, John.
Right, right, okay. All right, this is a public hearing. So any of those in favor or those opposed?
Commission Chair Abrego, I do have one email in favor. I would like to read that into the record.
Okay.
So this is addressed to the Paramount Planning Commission. In regards to tonight's hearing on billboards, we are in full support of this. The location is selected, the location selected is virtually free of any negative light exposure to the residents of the city, yet provides great visibilities, visibility for the commuters on 710. In addition, the billboard provides a long-term growing revenue for the city of Paramount. The billboard is designed with an attractive facade with graphics acknowledging the presence in the city of Paramount. The agreement with the city of Paramount allows for some free-of-charge public messaging supporting the city, businesses, and residents of the city of Paramount. And this is from Travis DeRose, one of the applicants. And that's it in favor and we do not have anything opposed.
Thank you, John. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
This is Ernie Esparza, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, please, my.
This is Weisenberger, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Esparza?
Yes.
Chair Abrego?
Yes. Okay, can I get a, a motion to adopt the mitigation negative declaration of, or excuse me, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program? Do I have both together, John, or?
Separately.
You could, you could do it in one motion, Mr. Chair. It would just be that you would be approving the environmental first and then the actual development agreement afterwards. But that can be under one motion.
Okay, and also adopting the resolution number PC 20020 recommending that the city council approve development agreement number 20-1.
That's correct.
Can I get one, a motion from our fellow commissioners?
This is Weisenberger, I make a motion. So moved.
Can I get a second?
This is Commissioner Bautista, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Esparza?
Yes.
Chair Abrego?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is number six, conditional use permit number 881. A request by Industrial Tool and Dye Design Inc. Incorporated to operate and manufacture custom spacers and bushings for the automotive and commercial industries at 15947 Minnesota Avenue in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone.
Yes, Commission Chair Abrego and Commissioners, John King will handle this item.
Thank you, Commission Chair and Commissioners. So this one is over on Minnesota, 15947. It's in the M2 zone. It's what we call the central industrial district and fits the bill. Industrial Tool and Dye Design is the applicant. You'll see, so the photo, the applicant bought the property in late 2018. And they've painted the building, they've painted the, restored the awning, the metal awning over the, the entry door. So it's looking a lot better than it had been. And actually, they planted some flowers in the front recently, too. So they're manufacturer of custom spacers and bushings for the automotive and commercial industries. The property is 7,500 square feet. The building is 4,650 square feet. And they've been in Gardena for at least 10 years. They've been leasing there and they worked very hard. They saved up and now they have this property to take a little more control of their destiny. And they've been anxious to get going here. So the next slide is an aerial photo. You'll see Minnesota running north and south. And you see the, outlined in red is the property and it's a couple of properties, or three properties north of Monroe Street. This is just east of Garfield. And so it's the next slide, you'll see at the top site plan with the floor layout inside the building, a floor plan. The, well, Minnesota is to the east of the property and then there's an alley to the rear. And you can see there's some parking in the, in the yard area, including, there's, there would be ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act compliant parking stall in there. They would operate 9:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday to Friday, with five employees. It's a family business, by the way. And they would do production, inspection, and shipping and receiving and then some general office administration inside the building. Their equipment, so they have machines, they have screw machines, they have CNC lathes, so basically the computerized cutting tool. And they have four 60-ton presses inside of there. That's what, that's what they would like to install. The next slide is a view of how it looks inside the building. So as they've been preparing this application, they've just kind of moved in a few personal items and they're just kind of using it as their own personal gem. Just they're, you know, it's a family until they get their machines in there from Gardena, if you approve of this. So with the machinery, we did, wanted to make sure that the, any vibration from what they do does not, cannot be detected from the neighboring property tenants or residents. The, there is one resident nearby to the south. The applicant contracted with an acoustical engineer to did an extensive study, that's part of what you're looking at. Jumping to the bottom line, this engineer concluded that the vibration levels from the presses will comply with city vibration limits that the, uh, vibration levels from the presses will comply with city vibration limits of .05 inches per second, peak particle velocity, PPV, and 75 VDB, that's basically decibel, um, vibration decibels along the property lines. So I know it's some weird, strange numbers, but, um, basically there's, um, there's a, a number set by the city, um, two different types of readings, um, one's more conventional than the others. We, we decided to include both in our municipal code, our zoning ordinance, and, um, the tools and the machines in here would, would, um, be under those limits. So the next slide shows at the top, the actual instruments that the, um, the acoustical engineer used to, to study the vibration, and take these readings from different distances, 20 feet, 25 feet, 44.3 feet. And, um, and you could see with the numbers, all are, um, well under the, uh, the vibration limit that, that are, that's been set by the city. So, um, there should not be any, um, any, uh, detection from, you know, if you're working or living nearby. Onto the conditions of approval. Uh, there are conditions about the, the property itself. Uh, a few years back, a previous property owner took out the landscaping and put in some concrete in the front setbacks. So with part of the city's goals about greenery and sustainability, the, this applicant will replace the concrete in the front setback with, uh, landscaping and irrigation, kinda soften up the area, put in a tree, that's always, you know, it's good to have more trees. They'll keep the walkway, um, and, and driveway, that'll, that'll stay. They'll also refurbish the rear patio cover and rear perimeter fencing as needed. So, uh, with that, we recommend, uh, adopting resolution number PC 20007, and, um, that's it. I haven't answered any questions any, any of you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from our commissioner?
Uh, yeah, this is Commissioner Batista. I just have a question just to confirm. So this applicant, uh, did buy the property, correct?
Yes. It's been, uh, two, uh, over a year. Yeah, about a year and a half.
And, uh, yeah, my next question was gonna be in talks of, uh, you know, sustainability and adding more green spaces in our city. Uh, adding, adding, you know, some flowers or some more trees would be ideal. Um, just something that we can review for future applicants. That way, you know, it keeps us consistent, um, consistency going into the future for us, some more green spaces and green area.
Absolutely. We, um, we'll, we'll do, um, we'll, we'll work toward more green space and actually, and the other side, uh, preserving the existing green space. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. This is a public, public hearing. So any, anyone in favor or anyone opposed?
Uh, Commission Chair Abrego, we have, uh, nothing in favor, nobody in favor, nobody opposed.
Thank you, John. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
This Ernie Asparza, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
This is Commissioner Batista. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Asparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes. Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt the planning commission resolution number PC 20007, approving a request by Industrial Tool and Die, and Die Design Inc. Incorporated to operate a manufacturing, custom spacers and bushings for the automotive and commercial industries?
Uh, this is Weisenberger. I make that motion to approve, uh, 20007.
Negative. Ernie Asparza, I'll second. Thank you. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista? Commissioner Batista, okay. Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Asparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yeah. Next item is number seven, conditional use permit number 883, a request by Mariscos El Periote, number two, Incorporated, to expand existing alcoholic beverage sales for onsite consumption to impose distilled spirits at 1600, 600, 16,600 Paramount Boulevard.
Uh, thank you, Commission Chair Abrego and Commissioners. Um, this is the, um, restaurant that's located at the southeast corner of Paramount and Harrison, just, uh, south of City Hall, and Reyna Schatzel will walk you through this item.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the commission. As John stated, this is an application for a CUP 883, uh, for Mariscos El Periote at 16, 600 Paramount Boulevard. The request by the applicant is to expand the sale of alcohol to include distilled spirits for onsite consumption. Um, the applicant currently has an ABC license for onsite sale and, sale of beer and wine only for consumption onsite only, and this was granted in 1992 by the city as well as the Alcohol Beverage Control Department. Um, as John stated, this is located, the property is located in the C3 general commercial zone, and the business is family-owned restaurant operation since 2004, and the building was recently remodeled, actually, in 2005, under the Commercial Rehabilitation Program. Again, this is a family-owned and operate, operated business since 2004. The restaurant is sit-down only, there's no permanent outdoor dining. Um, they serve traditional Mexican seafood dishes such as shrimp tacos, ceviche, and cocktails. Um, there are approximately 12 employees each working, or with six to 10 employees per shift. The restaurant seats 112 total in their customer seating area, and there is no permanent outdoor dining. However, currently, they do have an alfresco per, permit, um, under the city's, uh, temporary plan for, to allow outdoor dining in response to COVID-19, and that is currently permitted and ongoing as, on a temporary basis. The restaurant hours of operation are from 8:00 AM to 1:30 AM every day, and, um, staff worked with the applicant to propose the following alcohol sales, uh, should this application for a CUP for distilled spirits be granted. Basically, from 10:30 AM to 12:30, that should be AM, um, Sundays through Thursdays, which is the weekdays. Um, and the applicant has requested a little bit more time before they close, um, to cut off alcohol sales on Fridays and Saturdays. So that will be a special condition for sale of alcohol in the conditional use permit. As stated, uh, previously, they have a permit, um, under the, under Paramount's alfresco program for outdoor dining. This is them setting up a week ago on July 8th, when they got their permit. Um, it's in the back of the restaurant. What you see on the top right is, um, off of Harrison Street in the parking lot, and that's between the restaurant, uh, Periote, and, um, the coin op laundry to the right or east. And on the south side of the building where the, uh, canopies are off the building, that's their other seating area. None of it is blocking ADA accessibility, um, and it was approved by the city last week. This is an aerial view of the property, which is approximately 38,000 square feet. The restaurant itself is 4,000. The two suites in the back, um, are approximately 5,000. Again, there's a coin op laundry there and a, um, a sister restaurant owned by the applicant as well, El Peri Sushi. And in the staff's exhaustive parking analysis, there are 50 parking spaces required onsite, and 52 are provided for all the uses onsite. This is the, um, architectural drawing site plan, um, for the area. And here's the floor plan. There are approximately 16 benches, 10 four-seat booths, one big seat, one family six-seat booth, and 34 individual seats throughout the restaurant, as well as on the top right, um, and towards the, uh, north, towards Harrison Street and in the back off of the, uh, or off of the parking lot, if you will. That's where their coolers are, their kitchen is, and all the cooking, um, uh, equipment. These are some current pictures as submitted by the applicant. Um, the top left is, as John stated, is at the corner of Paramount and Harrison Street, looking southeast, south, um, east. And then on the bottom right, or middle right, is the parking lot where, to the right, we'll find the, um, alfresco dining right now. And then the bottom is the back where the other alfresco is, and there's a current, there's currently a trash closure there as well. Uh, staff worked with the ABC, which is the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, to review their license. There are eight licenses allowed in this census district, and there are eight active. Um, the request in front of the planning commission to change it from beer and wine only to distilled is basically, uh, same to same, uh, uh, as I'll discuss later how the ABC reviews alcohol. So there will be no more active licenses should this be granted. Um, ABC views restaurants, um, for onsite consumption of distilled spirits, beer and wine included, more favorably than bars, because they're served with meals and they cannot be taken offsite. The alcohol cannot be consumed offsite, it's all inside. Um, and alcohol sales for restaurants typically are small, less than 15, 10% of the portion of the business sales, and so that's why ABC, uh, views these more favorably than strict, um, uh, than strict sale for offsite consumption. Um, and again, the ABC has their own operating criteria, which minimizes the negative impacts, including training for all the employees, posting of signs on the site, um, hours that alcohol can be served, and then, then finally, they do monitor the prob, the applicants by, um, random, random inspections. We also talked to their public safety department, and they have no concerns if alcohol is consumed with meals and is less than 50% of the receipts. And then with that, the applicant will be required to maintain their current security plan as approved by the public safety department. That includes security cameras and, um, are, that are in good working order. Staff included, uh, planning staff had some conditions of approval for the property in general, which would be to fix and repair the monument sign on Paramount Boulevard. A particular letter in Periote has fallen out, so we want to make sure that gets replaced. Um, the electrical boxes have been graffitied, so there will be some conditions for repainting those, as well as the wall on the south side of the property, and the landscape planter within that wall area needs to be replanted, um, as well as maintain the landscaping throughout the property in a thriving condition. So with that, the, uh, planning staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution PC 2000, 2000, 011, and approve the request for the modification for CUP number 883. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from our commissioners?
This is, uh, Commissioner Batista. I do have a question. Thank you for that, uh, analysis. Um, on the electrical boxes, is there a possibility that the applicant can do some type of artwork related to the city of Paramount or something historical within our city?
Um, the planning staff will ask him to do that. I believe that's a public, uh, in public places, the electrical boxes that you see, but we can ask and work with the applicant to do that, to do some artwork on it.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. This is a public hearing. So are those, anyone those in favor or opposed of this motion or condition?
No comments in, no comments in favor or opposed.
Thank you, John. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay. Was that a second side move?
This is Commissioner Batista. I will second that motion.
Okay. Thank you. Um, roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Asparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yeah. Can I get a motion to adopt the planning commission resolution number PC 2001, approving the request by Mariscos El Periote, number two, Corp., to expand existing alcohol beverage sales onsite consumption, including the distilled spirits?
Uh, this Ernie Asparza, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, PC 20011.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
This is Commissioner Batista. I will second that motion to approve.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Asparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yeah. The next item is, um, item, or item number eight, conditional use permit number 887, a request by Jose Ponte and Ponte, uh, Ponte Recycling to operate a small recycling collection facility at the 16259 Paramount Boulevard in the PDPS Plan Development with Performance Standards Zone.
Uh, yes, uh, Commission Chair Abrego and Commissioners, um, this is a request for approval of a small recycling facility, and this is located on the Northgate supermarket property. It would be on the north side of Northgate, and our associate planner, Reyna Schatzel, will walk you through the item.
Good evening again, Honorable Chair. Thank you, John, and Commissioners. Good evening again. Um, as stated, this is a CUP, um, request 887 for recycling facility north of, Northgate in their loading, um, unloading area parking lot. The request is to allow a small recycling facility, which is approximately 490 square feet, so about four parking spaces, and the facility will be for consumer-related recyclable materials such as glass, plastics, and aluminum. Again, it's located at 16259 Paramount Boulevard behind Northgate or to the west of Northgate, um, directly actually in back of the Autozone retail component. It's in the PDPS Zone, Plan Development with Performance Standard Zone as well. Um, the Northgate Market is currently in a convenience zone that is not served, um, with a small recycling collection facility. As defined by CalRecycle, a convenient zone is a half-a-mile radius of a market with 2 million gross sales, and the market is considered a full-line store that sells a line of dry groceries, canned goods, and other non-food items and perishable items. So as stated, Northgate Market is not served, um, by one of these small collection facilities, and as such, they're subject to fines, um, um, from the California Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery Program, i.e. CalRecycle. This is a site plan of the property. Uh, the facility will be located right off of Monroe Street, where it intersects and veers north, uh, into Colorado Street. Um, again, uh, Northgate is off of Paramount Boulevard to the east. This is aerial picture of the property. There's, uh, again, in green, the site is behind the Autozone building, and actually is servicing Northgate, as well as all the residents and commercial, uh, businesses surrounding within a half-mile of, of the Northgate Market. Uh, City Hall is just south of Jackson Street. So the applicant has submitted plans that are very, uh, very enhanced, very high-quality. Typically, these are just metal containers that are painted, uh, but, uh, but the applicant's plan that you have in front of you is for a nine-foot-high decorative block wall with enhanced landscaping surrounded on three sides of the facility. Um, what you see on the right is the rear-facing wall with, um, a new tree to be added, um, the rear-facing wall from Monroe Street. Um, wrought iron gates on the other side of that wall will be used for the receiving area and will be locked securely, uh, with padlocks and chains, uh, every night at 5:00 PM. Um, there's a security plan that will, uh, that's already in place for Northgate Market, but staff wants to have it re-reviewed if as necessary and approved by public safety so that there's no loitering or vandalism in the area after, um, it's closed and during operations. And so these are pictures currently that, uh, staff took today of where the facility will be off of Monroe Avenue. This is looking south from Monroe Avenue. Um, the circled area is approximately the four parking spaces where the facility will be. And I'd like to go back, I forgot to mention that the decorative, uh, wall here is also is split-face block, which is really nice, and it has lattice work on the, on west wall that you see on the bottom picture, and the lattice will have crawling vines, so it'll have enhanced landscaping to be, um, decorative and, and a lot nicer than many of the facilities that we've seen in previous years that were built. Um, so again, this is a current picture of where the facility will go. And, uh, in reviewing the CUP with the applicant, who has agreed to all these conditions and in fact imposes them on himself in the beginning, um, these are the operations to maintain safety, security, and cleanliness. Um, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM... 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. daily is what he's asking for. Our code allows for 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. He doesn't need all that. There will be two employees to receive the recyclables. If you look on the bottom right of this site plan, in the receiving area, that's where the employees will receive the recyclables and reimburse the customers. The containers are your typical kind of truck-loading containers that will be removed twice weekly or more as needed, should staff deem a necessary. Again, the site will clean daily, it's in the back of the market. There are eight remaining parking spaces to the south of the facility and for employees to use or customers to use when they drop off items. And then overflow parking for employees and customers will also be in the front of, in the Northgate parking lot or in public parking lots throughout the area. So the operations are very well thought out and very secure. And with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC 20021 for and approve CUP number 887. And I have the applicant on standby to call to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Any questions from our commissioners? This is a public hearing, so anyone that's in favor or opposed?
Yes, Commission Chair Abrego and Commissioners, we did receive five emails that are in opposition, and we received a sixth email that would like us to call her so that she can speak personally in opposition. So what I'm going to do is read the five emails that we received, and then we will call the sixth person that replied. So the first email is from Mike and Gal Radis, and they write in their email, "Please deny CUP number 887. The proposed recycling collection center will be a strain on our neighborhood that is already chaotic at times. We have a series of single-family homes with an alley between them that is going to turn into a scavenging ground for would-be recyclers, including the homeless population, that oftentimes come into our neighborhood from a laundry or the train tracks. The traffic in the morning of delivery trucks down Vermont and Colorado, oftentimes speeding or standing is already backed up as it is. The sidewalks around the market are busy with the many people who walk to shop at Northgate, and the additional foot traffic, bicycle traffic, and vehicles will impede sidewalk traffic and vehicle traffic in our area. I think the recycling center will also be a nuisance in regard to odors on hot days, sticky, dirty parking lots, driveway pans, and sidewalks, and litter. Many times, people stage their recycling in the immediate area of centers, distort through, refuse to find recyclables in it, pouring liquids out of the containers and discarding the nonvaluable materials like caps and trash on the ground. Please do not subject us to this by allowing this CUP." The second email we received is from Angel Franco, and Mr. Franco writes, "Hello, my name is Angel Franco. I live at 15916 Vermont Avenue, Paramount. We do not want a recycle facility in our neighborhood. We do not want the smell, the traffic, or the homeless going through our recycle bins to collect cans or leave trash in our neighborhood. None of my neighbors want this either. Thank you." The third comment in opposition is from Lucas Willem Z, and he writes, "I am a Paramount resident at 15943 Colorado Avenue. This is around the corner from your proposed location for a recycling center on Monroe Street. I strongly object to this proposal. We already have to tolerate noise all during the day from refrigerated semis parked at Northgate loading dock. This will add more noise. We already have a severe parking problem with overflow from the Northgate parking lot during the day. Also, residents from the next street, Vermont, routinely park on our streets because of the limited parking available for the residents of the large apartment building on Vermont. I can't believe Northgate Market would be in favor of this. Their delivery trucks have a hard time maneuvering around the parked cars to get into the loading dock. This will only make that worse. The area that is proposed is used all day long by the smaller delivery trucks for Northgate and all the delivery trucks for AutoZone. How can AutoZone get their semi-trailer in there with the proposed recycle area? If any more information is needed, please do not hesitate to contact me." The fourth email in opposition is from Maria Ponce, and she writes, "To whom it may concern, we are your neighbors that live right on the corner where you guys want to open this recycling center. I love my neighborhood because it's peaceful and quiet, and that said, I want to let you know that I am against this recycling project just to think of all the traffic that is going to cause not only that this is an open invitation to roaches, rats, ants, and other health issues. I have enough with all the noise early in the morning with the deliveries from the market behind my house. So do you think I will want this going on in my neighborhood when you all are going to be in your nice, peaceful, and quiet place? If you want it, then move it into your neighborhood. I don't want to be or sound rude, but I'm not in favor of this." The final email comment that we received in opposition is from Larissa Swedell. She writes, "To the city of Paramount, I am writing to express my strong objection to the planned recycling center next to Northgate Market in Paramount. I own the property at 15937 Colorado Avenue, five houses from the planned location. I already experience way too much traffic, parking overflow, and noise generated by Northgate Market and the associated businesses on that block. My alarm system has frequently been activated erroneously by the large trucks driving past my house on their way to and from Northgate and the associated businesses. A recycling center would only make the situation worse. Thank you for your consideration." And then we have the final email, and she would like us to call, so if you'll bear with me for just a minute, I'm going to call her and put her on with you.
Okay. Okay. All righty.
The number you dialed is not a working number. Please check the number and dial again.
Okay, let me try that again. Hi, Ms. Alcaraz?
Yes?
Hi, this is John Carver with the City of Paramount, and we're calling in response to your email request to speak to the Planning Commission.
Yes.
Okay, great. So you're on with the Planning Commission, and you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, the reason for the challenge towards this recycling facility is I just feel that there can be negative impressions near the surrounding areas, hence our neighborhood, our block, our alleyway, the traffic that is going to attract, the unsightly traffic that it's going to attract, that's what concerns us. And we're a young family, we have young kids, and it's just something else that just concerns us for the long-term benefit, which really, there aren't any benefits when we think about it. So that was basically it, that we just feel that safety issues, property issues, unsightly issues, that it's going to bring forth to our neighborhood. And that's basically my concern.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Alcaraz.
Thank you.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chair Abrego, that's it for in opposition. We would like to call the applicant now so that he can do a rebuttal.
Okay.
Okay, so Rena will be calling the applicant right now. Give us just a minute.
Yes. Hi, Jose Ponce?
Yes.
This is Rena. Hi, Jose, calling from the City of Paramount, and for you to talk in favor of your project for the CUP 887 for the recycling facility?
Yes.
Would you like to offer a rebuttal to the public hearing items that you've heard in front of you for in opposition to CUP 887?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Jose Ponce, owner of Ponce Recycling. We propose to place a convenience recycling facility in the property located in 16259 Paramount Boulevard in the Northgate Market Shopping Center. Our operation will consist in buying CRB material from the general public. The material collected will be safely stored inside of our containers. There will be two staff members present at all times during operational hours. Ponce Recycling will provide a good and friendly service to the community of Paramount. We will operate under high standards and provide a safe and clean environment. The recycling facility will be very convenient for the community. Now they will be able to shop and redeem their CRB in the same shopping center. People will not have to drive far to redeem their CRB. Now they will be able to do it within their community. The residents need a recycling facility that is convenient within their community to redeem their CRB. We will be committed to serve the community of Paramount and provide a good and friendly service. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to keep you on the line for a second.
Yes.
Okay. Are we allowed to ask any questions?
Yes, certainly. Go ahead.
Okay.
Are you following the meeting?
Commissioners, do we have any questions from any of our commissioners regarding this?
Yes, I do have a question. Commissioner Gutierrez?
Mr. Gutierrez, the commission has a question for you.
Yes. Yes, so I know we got a couple emails and a call-in in opposition. Was there a letter that was sent to the local residents in that area?
Yes.
Yes.
With all of our public hearings, we send a notice to property owners and residents and tenants within 500 feet of the location of the project.
Good to hear. Okay. Any other questions, Commissioners?
This is Commissioner Baptista. I do have a question. I see the nine-foot-high decorative block walls, enhanced landscaping. I think it is a good idea that those high walls will serve as a, to deter, you know, like an eye toward our community, especially our neighbors in that area. I just want to clarify, as far as the nine-foot-high decorative block wall, that's on Monroe, but I see that in the yellow area, basically in between the two docks, you know, there's some type of division with a handrail and some like two-foot concrete that slopes down into the property. Is there a possibility to also enhance that area?
Good question.
Can you repeat that? I think I can answer that question.
So there is a, you know, the nine-foot-high decorative block wall on Monroe, reaches north of the elevation, and then there is a yellow guardrail in between the two docks. Is there a possibility to raid that yellow guardrail and actually bring some type of that high decorative enhancement for that community as well?
You mean the loading dock yellow guardrail?
Correct.
That you see in one of the slides? We could explore that as an option. I believe it goes down to the end where the loading dock is, to almost be 10, 12 feet high at the end. We could explore that.
I mean, it could be just as an idea, it could be maybe something that the community could benefit as far as something with more landscaping that would enhance that area. I just see the concerns as far as traffic. But my other question was to Mr. Jose Ponce. I hear the community speaks a lot about the traffic in that area. Could there also be the possibility of maybe changing the hours of operation? For example, between the hours of, you know, 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, I'm pretty sure there's a lot of parents that drop off, obviously when school goes back into session, but kids get dropped off in school or people start going to work, parents start going to, especially the moms, you know, they start going to the grocery store. So I could see the concerns for the traffic. Could there be the possibility for the hours of operation to maybe start at 10:00 a.m. when those traffic hours have minimized and just kind of chicken to that possibility as well?
I will ask Jose, Jose, are you okay with starting at 10:00 a.m.?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, Jose said that's fine. He can start at 10:00 a.m.
Can we do that 10:00 a.m. weekdays? Weekdays? I need you.
Any other questions from our commissioners?
He's requesting 10:00 a.m.
One more piece of information from Rena, real quick.
Jose actually is requesting 10:00 a.m. on weekdays and then 9:00 a.m. on weekends when people have more free time, if that's okay with the commission.
So she's requesting 10:00 a.m. weekdays and 9:00 a.m. on the weekend.
Correct. Yes. Please.
Okay. Commissioner Vice Chair Esparza, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, that's okay. The concern that the residents really have, as you can see, is the traffic and what she's saying, some of these people are saying about the homeless. As you can see on our recycling center that we have, right by our city, around the city on Garfield Avenue, you see the traffic there and what's happening, and the smell too. And this is in the residential area, that's why they're so concerned. That is also my concern for them. And I spin through there when these big, the trucking coming in into the loading of the docks, you know, and they block all the traffic and so forth. So I can see the five or six people, mostly their concern was that, and I see their point. So that's all I have to say, really.
The applicant has heard your concerns and would like to respond?
Go ahead.
Yes, the recycling center you're talking about, they do scrap metal, they do a whole lot more stuff than we do. We're just a convenient recycling center. We just do cans and bottles, that would be plastic bottles, just their beverage recycling. We are not as big as them. We're just a small recycling collection. We do not do any scrap metal, no newspaper, no cardboard. So yeah, we're a lot smaller than them. And yeah, we keep our areas very clean, and you know, Northgate is very active in what their, on their tenants. Well, I'm a tenant of Northgate and other locations, so they are really, really supervising us in how well we maintain our locations, our facility. And you know, yeah, that's, you know, that's, we do give a lot of maintenance on those locations because we're out there in the shopping center.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Baptista. I have a question for Mr. Ponce.
Go ahead.
Mr. Ponce, how many other facilities you have been operating with Northgate?
Go ahead, Jose.
How many years?
I'm sorry, what was this question?
How many facilities do you have with Northgate Markets, and where are they?
I have three, one on Anaheim, one in Norwalk, and one in Englewood.
Thank you.
And the, what is the, the time for this permit? Is it conditional for a year or two, or what does the applicant also, or how long does he request this?
This would go... This would go with the use, Commissioner Bautista. So as long as, as long as he's operating, it would continue with him and somebody could buy the business from him and continue that with this conditional use permit. There's not a time limit on the conditional use permit.
I see the benefits regarding the fact that it's not, like he did mention, not paper products, not metal products, it's basically CRB. It could be a small benefit to the community that could recycle our goods. Also, I see the community's side as far as the traffic and the possibility of making it, you know, a very trashy area, traffic area. That's my concern, just maybe we can work those things out. Maybe it could, maybe it could work out.
Right, and this is Espaza for Mr. Ponce. The ones that you have, the three facilities that you have, are they in the residential area, like the one you're trying to put in now? Plus, the one you're talking about, the one I talked about was Garfield. But I also see the one on Main and Paramount Boulevard, and of course, that's South Gate, but I see their recycling center. And they have a container there, but you should see the traffic, the people in the parking lot. So that's one of my concerns also is the traffic. The controlling of the traffic and so forth, so, okay?
So, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I have one in the residential area in Anaheim. And we don't, I have, it's not, I have one, let's say, staff member that is just simply dedicated in helping customers, directing customers. They will direct the customers, help them unload and stuff. So that is not an issue because I will have someone just specifically for that.
Now, the one in South Gate, the one with all the traffic, how do you address the traffic issue? Oh, never mind.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I don't have to answer this. I don't know how.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Are we done with the questioning? Right now at this time, and we did that for a motion.
This is Commissioner Gutierrez. I do have a question for John or for anybody from the city. Is it okay if I, but in?
Yes, go ahead.
So I know there's been some concern with traffic and parking and stuff like that, but I do know that the city already has a couple issues in different areas with order control. How would the city be enforcing order control or the keenness of its establishment if it is approved?
The item that is actually addressed in the sanitation on site. I can ask Jose, it's addressed in the CUP sanitation on site, stormwater management, drainage plans, what kind of cleaning products they would use. And Jose can answer that further and if you'd like. Wait, hold on just a second. Is it okay if Jose answers that? Go ahead, Jose.
Yeah, so what we do is we provide, let's say, five-gallon buckets for any, for our customers for any spills. If, I mean, if they have any liquids in their water bottles, they, we, they pour it in those buckets. And then cleaning-wise, I mean, we mop our area and of course, if any excess of liquid, we roll and toss it in the drain of North Gate, any drain that is proper to do with, you know, the water quality control and stuff.
Okay.
Commission, Commissioner Abrego. The commission could put a condition on here that if you, if you would, if you did approve this, you could bring it back for a review six months after it has started operation just to see how things are going.
I would, yeah, I think that's a good idea since we've got...
That's a great idea.
All right, so if I make a motion first to, am I okay to make a motion to close the public hearing first? Or do I leave that open for six months?
No, you would close the public hearing, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Abrego, I've got a question. This is Weisenberger.
Okay, go ahead.
This is directed to Mr. Ponce. I see in the paperwork here that your intentions are to be open seven days a week. Is that accurate, seven days a week including Sundays?
Go ahead.
Yeah, we're gonna be open seven days a week, but now I'm open to your schedule. As you suggested, we go open at 10:00 a.m. I mean, I'm open to, if you guys want to make changes, yeah, that's fine. I mean, we could change, you know, the schedule.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. This is Commissioner Bautista. Yeah, I wanted to maybe propose that way we can also really treat to our community's concern and maybe the hours of operation can be from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. That way we minimize the high-traffic hours and, you know, like, like Mr. John advised, maybe we basically see how it goes for six months.
Got that?
Can you repeat that again?
10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Okay, just to be clear, are you looking for the seven days to be in those hours, Bautista?
Yeah, maybe 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 or 10:00 to 4:00. That way it's consistent.
9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Okay.
This is Ernie Esparza, Commissioner Esparza. I can see that is correct from 10:00 to 4:00 because of the traffic and so forth, but also of what Mr. Gutierrez brought up was the odor. I've never seen a place being mopped, to be honest with you. I never have, but maybe Mr. Ponce does that. So those are only my comments. Okay?
Thank you.
We can also pressure wash it, you know, I think it's...
Okay, John?
Yes, Chairman Abrego?
Okay, I hear someone talking in the background.
I apologize.
Jose would like to address further how it's...
Okay, so the applicant would like to address the odor.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, well, the, I mean, of course, the odor, the odor goes along with the cleanliness, right? So we keep, we keep our facility clean at all times. We sweep it very frequently, I mean, through the day, like, we just, we sweep, you know, all day. And we, of course, we mop our sitting area and we also, I mean, pressure wash twice a week. And also with those buckets that we provide or customers, you know, prevent the spills. So that will help, that helps, I mean, keeps the site clean, you know, and it doesn't, I mean, it shouldn't be no odors at all.
Okay. All right, I guess we'll make a motion to close the public hearing if we don't have any other questions. I get a motion to close the public hearing?
This is Weisenberger. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
This is Ernie Esparza, I second it.
Okay, and can I get a motion to adopt the planning commission resolution number?
Chair, Chair Abrego could...
Oh, roll call, roll call, yes.
Chair, Chair Abrego, what happened?
I'm right here. I'm right here, John. Can I get a roll call?
Right, our server just cut off.
What's going on?
John, John Carver? Ernie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello, I can hear you.
Okay, good.
It seems like John's having some connection issue.
Yeah, we're getting a roll call for the motion to close the public hearing, right?
Okay, so...
Chair, Commissioners?
Yeah.
I apologize, we, our system went down for just a minute.
Okay.
Okay, is everybody here? Commissioner Bautista?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Gutierrez?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Weisenberger?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Abrego?
Yeah.
Okay, so we should do a roll call vote to close the public hearing, Commissioner Chair Abrego.
Okay, can I, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Or, I'm sorry, can I get a roll call?
Yes.
Because we already...
Yes, you're right, I'm sorry. So Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Esparza?
Yes.
Chair Abrego?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the conditional use permit number 887, we might get approval to adopt the planning commission resolution number PC 20021, approving the request for Jose Ponce Recycling to operate a small recycling collection facility at 16259 Paramount Boulevard in the planned development performance standard zone behind our, or is it, behind the North Gate Market. Also adding that we will come back six months from now to review the CUP for, I guess, complaints or additional conditions if there's any issues for, I guess, for the CUP conditions.
And there was a question about changing the hours also from 10:00 to 4:00?
Correct.
Correct.
We will amend the conditions as soon as...
Okay, thank you.
Include those items?
Okay, can I get a motion?
This is Commissioner Bautista. I'll make a motion to...
Thank you. A second please. Can I get a second for that motion? Ernie, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, can I get a second for that conditional use permit number 887? With the modifications, adding the additional review in six months from now unless the operating hours change.
John Kavanaugh, are you still there? Okay, Commissioner Chair Abrego, I believe the motion is dying without the second.
Okay.
Okay.
Roll call.
We, we, we actually, we don't have a, we don't have a second on...
I'm sorry, we, okay, okay, so that, this means that we have to come back around on the next signing commission meeting?
No, I, 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 I believe that the item is not approved. Yes, would somebody like to make a different motion, either with amended commission conditions or a motion to deny?
This Commissioner Gutierrez would like to make a motion to deny.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay.
Roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Bautista?
Ernie?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Bautista, this would be to deny. Was that a yes or a no?
Um, no.
Okay, Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes, I vote to approve the motion.
Okay. Commission Chair Esparza?
I deny it.
Okay. Commission Chair Abrego?
I deny as well.
Okay, so it's denied by five to zero.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify, a yes vote means that we're, you're saying no, that you're denying it, right?
Yes, the motion was to deny the request, so the applicant would not be able to operate the recycling facility.
Just making sure because the double negative can be a little bit confusing.
Sure.
Okay.
So... Okay.
Okay, John.
So we would move on to the next item?
Okay, next item is item number nine, conditional use permit number 888. A request by Osha Rani and Kay Reddy, MD Ready Urgent Care to operate an urgent care medical office at 8311 Alondra Boulevard in the C3 commercial zone, general commercial zone.
Thank you, Commission Chair Abrego and Commissioners. Our planning intern Erica Barbero will be handling this item.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Commissioners and Commissioner Abrego. As mentioned, this application is to operate an urgent care medical office located at 8311 Alondra Boulevard. The request is to operate the facility at the C3 commercial zone and our general plan is located in the central business district. The suite's going to be operated within an existing 5,000-square-foot medical building right next door to this urgent, urgent care clinic as a dental office. Their clinic will provide outpatient, non-emergency medical services and vaccines to patients. Hours of operation will be from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday. The applicant has other clinical locations in Long Beach and Orange County, but that they do have a medical waste facility contract, or medical waste pickup contracted to do pickups in this area. Next slide, you'll see an aerial view where the facility is located. It is on Alondra Boulevard in between Indiana and Virginia Avenue. The facility itself is colored in the red box. There is an alleyway that leads to the parking lot in the back of the building. This is the front of the facility looking west. The next slide demonstrates the interior of the proposed clinic. So when you walk in, on the left side, you'll see the waiting room. This other photo shows of what one of the offices, or I'm sorry, the medical rooms looks like. It's one of three. Oh. Sorry about that. Okay, here you'll see a site plan of the building and the parking lot. And the next slide demonstrates the floor plans. Again, there's three medical exam rooms, a waiting room, and then there's going to be a provider office and that office space will be shared with clinic staff. Also, keep in mind, there will be three staff members on site during business hours, one doctor or nurse practitioner, a medical assistant, and of course, the receptionist to welcome patients. Staff recommends the approval of conditional use permit number 888. I failed to mention this in the slide, but it is attached to PC 20, or 2020, 20025. The applicant is on standby to take any questions that any of the commissioners may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Or, yeah, any questions from commissioners? Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone in favor or opposed?
No, we did not receive any, anybody in favor or anyone opposed.
Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
This is Ernie Esparza. Go ahead, Weisenberg.
Okay, Weisenberg?
Okay, Weisenberger, to move to close the hearing. Thank you, Ernie.
I'll second it.
Thank you, roll call please.
Commissioner Batista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Esparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yeah. Can I get a motion to adopt the planning commission resolution number PC 20025, approving a request from Boshia Rani and Rani Urgent Care to operate an urgent care medical office at 8311 Alondra Boulevard? Can I get a motion?
Uh, this is Weisenberger, I move to approve this resolution or this-
Thank you.
Commissioner Gutierrez, I second that.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Commissioner Batista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Esparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yeah. The next item is oral report. City Council Action.
Yes, Commission Chair Abrego and Commissioners, at their meeting last week, the City Council introduced an ordinance regarding art in public places on private land. That was something you had reviewed and recommended approval to, so we're going to start, part of that ordinance was a, I'm sorry, part of the approval was a mural program. So we're going to start work on encouraging murals and that's it. Thank you.
All right. Any comments from our city attorney?
No comments, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, John. Any comments from our Commissioners or staff?
No, not from me, Ernie.
Nothing from staff?
Thank you, John. This meeting is adjourned, um, next, or excuse me, this meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting, planning commission meeting, is going to be on August 11th at 6:00 p.m. Ernie, say orders.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bautista here?
Board Member Heinie is here.
Uh, can you hear me? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
We're having some issues again, so roll call, Board Member Abrego?
Yeah, here.
Board Member Batista?
Here.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Here.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Here.
Board Chair Esparza?
Here. Item one is the minutes, I need an approval of minutes of June 9th, 2020? Can I have a motion to approve them?
This is Weisenberger, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last month?
Was that Luis Teknia, Bautista?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'll second it.
Uh, roll call?
Can I have a roll call?
Yes, you can. Board Member Abrego?
Yeah.
Board Member Batista?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Chair Esparza?
Yes. Okay, any public comments, staff or new business?
Uh, no, no public comments.
Okay, new business report. Item two is DRA number 20010, and that's a request by Gold Key Development for design approval for the construction of 10 single-family homes at 6500-6510 Alondra Boulevard in the M1 light manufacturing zone. Have a report from staff, please.
Yes, Board Member, I'm sorry, Board Chair Esparza and Board Members. I'll be doing this presentation for you. This is back to our 10-unit detached, single-family home project at 6500 to 6510 Alondra Boulevard. And this is in connection with the zone change, the track map, and that partial parkway vacation that the Planning Commission approved earlier this evening. Again, the project's square footage is 30,744 square feet and in the surrounding neighborhood, there are single-family and multifamily residential. As we discussed previously, the homes will contain between 1,700 and 1,800 square feet. They will have four bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms. Each home will have an attached two-car garage and two driveway parking places. The lots will range in size from just under 20, just over 2,400 square feet to just over 3,600 square feet. And again, there will be resident permit parking on the frontage road and that will provide overflow parking and guest parking. Looking at the elevations, the units will have decorative roll-up garage doors, multi-level roof lines, decorative roofing material, decorative, decorative stone on some of the units. And looking at the site plan, each home, again, these will be individual lots and each home will have a private patio area as well as a backyard. The project will be accessed by two private driveways off of the Alondra Boulevard frontage road. One of the driveways will lead to three homes and the second driveway will lead to seven homes. And with that, we're recommending approval of Development Review Application 20010. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do any of the Commissioners have any questions?
Board Member Abrego, I don't have questions.
None from Weisenberger?
Okay, so what I need is a motion in order to approve a request by Gold Key Development for design approval for the construction of 10 single-family homes at 6500-6510 Alondra Boulevard in the M1 light manufacturing zone? Could I have a motion to approve?
Board Member Abrego, I, I, I make a motion, we approve the request by Gold Key Development for the design approval for the construction.
Do I hear a second?
I second the motion, this is the Terrace?
I need a-
Commission Chair Esparza, we have a motion and a second. Would you like a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Board Member Abrego?
Yeah.
Board Member Batista?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Chair Esparza?
Yes.
Okay. So item three, we have DRA, excuse me. Item three is DRA, yes? I can hear you.
Uh, Board Member Abrego, I'm-
We can hear you.
What's that?
Uh, Chair Esparza, we can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Item, okay, item three is DRA number 20007, and that's a request by Duane DeRose, DeRose Displays to construct and install a freeway-oriented digital billboard on vacant land north of Rosecrans Avenue between the Los Angeles River and 710 Freeway, assessor parcel number 6236035 and 013 in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. Can I have a report, staff, please?
Yes, Board Chair Esparza and Board Members, this is the second part of the digital billboard project and this involves approval of the design of the billboard. And John King, our Assistant Director, will walk you through the details.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Chair Esparza and Board Members. So we touched on the design already, so we'll just get a little more in-depth. So the applicant is DeRose Displays and there's a, there's the rendering of the sign with the, all those artistic elements. So again, to construct, the request is to construct and install a freeway-oriented digital billboard. So it's an electronic billboard that is proposed to go on the vacant land north of Rosecrans Avenue between the Los Angeles River and the 710 freeway, M2 zone. And as you know, the Commission reviewed the agreement earlier this evening and approved it. We've got to make sure it looks right, so the next slide is the location again. So again, this mysterious area between the river and the freeway. And this goes along with the ordinance that the Council adopted based on the Planning Commission's recommendation. And that ordinance also, in addition to the development agreement, requires development review by the Development Review Board. And the next slide shows the, the location on the, on the site plan. And again, there's that, right now, it's a dirt path, so the applicant is proposing to lay down some gravel. Actually, this sign would be very, after construction, would be very rarely accessed, most of the, well, you know, it's digital, so you don't have to have a crew changing the displays. It's just a, really a flip of a switch, in short. And then a closer look at that property. I was just counting the sides, it's an oddly shaped pentagram.
Right.
Yeah, and then a couple of photos again, you've seen these photos, just a refresher. Not much there, you know, actually, referring back to the photos in recent years with the homeless crisis, this has been a site of homeless encampments and through some expense of the county, getting mental health workers, county mental health workers, social workers, and law enforcement in some cases, and our city's public safety staff, some help in getting the homeless, people experiencing homelessness, to get them sheltered. So at this time, there are no people there. So that's another advantage of this project, to have some type of use and with those security cameras, that would be very helpful. So here's a closer look at the rendering. Again, it's double-sided, 40-foot, 45 feet in total height. The faces would be 48 feet in length and the height of the face is 14 feet. You have the city logo on both sides, our new logo, whether we may be able to fit our motto on there, "Safe, Healthy, and Attractive," which says a lot. We are looking for safe, healthy, and attractive area and sign. The messages would be a, so back to driver distraction, we don't want to cause crashes. I'll confess that I kind of get drawn into some of these signs in other areas. If there's information, I might just find myself staring as I drive. So it's really important, in Paramount, we want to keep the messages to a six-second minimum and have no scrolling, animating, or flashing. So it's basically the instantaneous changes to minimize distraction. And the applicant is okay with all of those conditions. So with that, we are recommending approval and I'm, as always, happy to answer any questions that could come up.
I have a question, John. On the security cameras, where would they be installed? Where would they go? Where would they?
It's, I, I, I've seen, we would review a location plan to see where the specific locations would be. It would be with the planning department and public safety and with consultation with the sheriff's department. But just kind of looking ahead, you want to think high and low. You want to make sure that the base, that the lower perimeter is secure and if somebody is, does want to tamper with the sign, that they're in, cameras with full view on all sides. You want, and you want a higher view up top because there are times when someone may breach the lower perimeter and it's unfortunate, but I, I'm sure you've seen some signs that have been vandalized on the upper portion to, you know, great expense of the, of those owners. So cameras would be very helpful across the board.
I think they would because especially, it goes direct to the sheriffs, you see on the high tech. I mean, they can spot them right away, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
The way they are now in homes, my God, they can, you know, they have them on their phones and they can spot anybody, you know, that's going inside, so.
Absolutely, with high resolution.
Especially, especially before we had high cam on the homeless in that area, you think. Anyway, that was one of my questions. Any other questions? Commissioners?
No question, no question, no question.
Okay, could I have a motion then to approve a request by Duane DeRose, DeRose Displays to construct and install a freeway-oriented digital billboard on vacant land north of Rosecrans Avenue between the Los Angeles River and the 710 freeway, assessor parcel number 6236035013 in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone? Can I have a motion, please, to approve this?
This is Commissioner Bautista, I'll make a motion to approve. Board Member Abrego, I second.
Okay, it's been approved. And second, could I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Board Member Abrego?
Yeah.
Board Member Batista?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Chair Esparza?
Yes.
Okay, fourth item, any comments from Board Members and staff?
Nothing from staff?
Any from the Board Members?
No, no, never, no.
Okay.
Nothing from them.
Okay, so the Paramount Development Review Board is adjourned to, we'll have the meeting adjourned to the meeting on August 11th, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. Thank you. Mr. Gordon Weisenberger?
Okay, thank you. This is Board Chair Gordon Weisenberger, calling to order the Paramount Economic Development Board for July 14th, 2020. Roll call of members, please.
Board Member Abrego?
Here.
Board Member Esparza?
Here.
Board Member Gutierrez?
Here.
Board Vice Chair Batista?
Here.
Board Chair Weisenberger?
Here. To item number one, the approval of minutes from our June 9th meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our June 9th meeting?
This is Esparza, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 9th.
Thank you, Commissioner, how about a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Board Member Abrego?
Yeah.
Board Member Esparza?
Yes.
Board Member Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Batista?
Yes.
Board Chair Weisenberger?
Yes.
Okay, John, do we have any public comments tonight?
No public comments.
Okay. And let's go to new business reports. Item number two, Assistant Directors' Monthly Report.
Yes, Board Chair Weisenberger and Board Members, our Assistant Planning Director, John King, will go over an oral report regarding COVID-19. John King, will go over, uh, an oral report regarding COVID-19 business recovery in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you, John, and, uh, thank you, Chair Wiesenberger and, and Board Members. Have a feeling you'll, through the months, will be hearing a lot of, um, updates on business recovery and, um, just, or recovery in general, um, regarding employment for the workforce and, um, employees and businesses. So, um, we did prepare a lot of slides, well, a fair share of slides. We'll, we'll kind of slim it down. It is, it's getting a little late. But, um, it, it is important, as you know, there's, um, a new order, kind of a reversal, um, this week, uh, regarding dining throughout the state, that, uh, canceling out indoor dining. So with that, we, Paramount wants to, um, make sure to, to support, um, the residents here, the, the general community and, and business owners. Uh, one focus is, is on restaurants. We've talked about this before. Um, to, so we've kind of streamlined, streamlined temporarily, um, the outdoor dining possibilities. And, um, associate planner Reyna, uh, got into this, uh, touched on this with the, um, Marisco Periwete application, that they've, um, they've become part, they've joined this program during the, this, uh, public health emergency. So, um, just a kind of refresher, we do have a, a business recovery committee, um, city staff, Chamber of Commerce, um, Selico, which is the Workforce Development Board that the city, um, just joined, um, this month, the Small Business Development Center of Long Beach, and, um, some, um, some brokers here in town have been helpful. It's, um, called a living document. The city's done a number of, um, of actions, and there's, um, some in-kind actions noted here, um, and different type of, some immediate actions, some intermediate actions on the next slide, following by long-term actions that, uh, the long term will take a little more, more time. But we wanted, so in the immediate is, uh, we've developed this Paramount Alfresco program that, uh, we're, we're very proud of. It does, it, we, as you know, it's very important to, to still have that opportunity to, to, to gather to some extent, but to do it safely, following, um, county guidelines. And, uh, so we have temporarily waived fees. Um, these are types of applications that would normally go to you as, uh, conditional use permits, but during this, uh, this emergency, um, we've streamlined this process, and it's a balancing, um, act. We do want to, uh, make sure that we're, um, securing sidewalks, for example, for, for pedestrians and those who are, are disabled, uh, keep the rights of way opened and clear. Um, but I do want to point out, so on the bottom left, you'll see a, a photo of, um, someone from our staff, that's Andres. He's been great at, um, doing a lot of, um, boots-on-the-ground outreach, getting out to the, to the business community and meeting, uh, many, many business owners and getting them involved in, in this program. And there's, you'll see some creative types of, uh, perimeter fencing. Um, on the upper right is, um, El Fagon at, uh, Rosecrans and Garfield. Those are actually palettes that he, uh, that the owner, Angel, he, he painted, um, orange, so, um, actually looks pretty nice. He took down the yellow safety tapes to give it a little touch. We have a, we're updating this webpage all the time. Business Resources is the next slide. Um, it's at paramountcity.com/businessresources. And, um, that's really it. Uh, that's it in summary, and, uh, we'll, we'll come back to you in future months with, with more details as these programs evolve in different sectors and hitting employers and employees.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Do we, let's move to item three, comments from Board Members or staff?
Nothing from staff.
No comment. Board Member Abrego, I don't have any questions.
Uh, John, this is, this is Wiesenberger. Let me, let me say, I'd like to, uh, commend your, uh, Business Recovery Committee. It's a comfort to know there's a plan in place, uh, to hasten to our recovery here in our city, and that when things open up, uh, based on what the governor says and health guidelines, that there's a plan in place to really get things moving again. So keep up the good work with that group.
Uh, sure, thank you, Board Chair, um, Wiesenberger. I would like to point out, um, our assistant city manager, Andrew Vialpondo, has been, uh, heading up those efforts and, and been, been doing a fantastic job.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, very good, very good.
I'll second that. Yes, that's very good.
Okay, if there are no, uh, further comments then from Board Members or staff, we will, uh, move to adjourn this meeting, um, for this month, and we will, uh, reconvene on August 11th at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so...
All righty.
I guess, uh, this is Wiesenberger. We're going to be signing off.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Okay, bye.
Good night. Very good. Good night, John. Thank you for your service.